Welcome to the four o'clock. Work session of the Douglas County Commission. Today is May seventeenth, just for those of you who may have never listened or attended our work sessions before. Our work sessions are for information purposes only. Today we're talking about the Douglas County Master Plan and we're revisiting the juvenile. The judicial law enforcement remodel and addition project update. If you have public comment for anything, we don't take public comment at these meetings, but you're welcome at our five thirty business meeting to provide public comment on this item if you like. Sarah, anything else before we get started? I'm not turning it over to Jay Jimmerstein. Our Director of Capital Projects to kick off this item.
Hello Commissioners. Today we're receiving. Preliminary information on progress on the. Master Plan revisit and. Judicial Law Enforcement Center remodel slash addition project. We have with us today Jeff Lane from Trainer HL, the selected design professional for the project. They are moving well through programming and that's a lot of what you will see today. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Jeff.
I got you. Sorry guys. Trying to navigate through some technology and all kinds of things here today. Um, well, thank you. My name's Jeff Lane with Trainer HL. Most of you have seen me multiple times. Appreciate the opportunity and. Wanted to kind of walk through. With you today. A tad bit of things that we've been working on. So I know that we got our kickoff in December of last, last year. And began moving through a process of programming and master planning. For the JLE and courts component here in Douglas County. So. I wanted to give you an update on kind of where we're at, where we're going, and then what, what's going to happen next. So let me see if I can figure this thing out. There we go. So we're going to talk about just some basic courthouse planning principles because that sets the stage as we move forward. And as we go forward and some of the next meetings, we'll talk about ideas, thoughts and, and how things come together. So those things are going to be important. We'll talk about our analysis to date. So we'll be able to share with you a little bit about. What it is that we've seen the existing courthouse. Space wise, what it does, what it doesn't do. And then we benchmark that against other courthouses across the country. So we'll be able to talk about that. And then also just a high level program review. So I want to show you kind of where we are today. I will give you this big caveat. So we are in process. I want to make sure because you're going to see some numbers as it relates to space. And in that program and because we have been continuing to meet with users. And everybody else, that number is going to continue to fluctuate. But I wanted to at least bring where we're at today to you. So you could see that and understand it a little bit. But I will tell you that number is going to change between now and when we finish our report. So a handful of different things that you may or may not know, some things that you may have talked about. Over the, the lifetime of what you know about courts design and those types of things. But it is really, really important to think about your current facility and whatever we do moving forward about. Site security. Entrance. So currently, and I'm going to point this out in a, in a, in an image. But those are things that although your building is doing some great things in nineteen seventy. When this was built and completed was not top of mind. Okay. With courts. And then, and then we're going to talk about circulation because circulation is really, really important as it relates to, to where we're going. And then thinking about utilization and the efficiencies within that space or within the building. Let me see if I can do this. Hold on, man. It was just a minute ago. Hold on, I got it. So courts in the past were about permanence. And then also the idea of monumentality. The building we're in today. Was your first courthouse. As you can see, you're still using it today. The courthouse that you have across the way, across the lawn. Is still here and it's a permanent piece of what the county is about, right? It's not something that we design and create. And 10 years later it goes away. So we, we recognize that and that hasn't changed as it relates to courts today. But the idea of what courts is becoming is different. So the permanence, the ability to think about it holistically, that is a fifty year. Idea or seventy-five year idea is still real and still how we and our team will vision what we're trying to do. Apologize for technology. I don't really want to speak behind you. Now you want to go do that? You want this? Sorry. Sorry, tried to, tried to make it work. No, you gotta go down some. Nope, keep going down. Another one. Another one. There we go. So really it's about community. It's about what we're trying to do from a functionality and flexibility and change. So the idea today with courts, as you think about it is not just. We're going in, we do court and we leave. There's so many other activities that happen within a courthouse. Whether that's marriage license, whether that's coming in and, and doing research. So you currently have a help center that's getting up and running. Which is a great piece for this community. So if I'm an individual and I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing. But I have a case or I have some kind of hearing that I've got to go to and I want to, I want to do the research myself. I can come to that. Space and I can do that research and there may be volunteers there that are able to help me work through that process. So court is drastically changing as you think about those things. The other pieces that you're currently doing right now. Is you've got a mental health court and a drug court. You probably will begin to think about, and I think. I also write, sorry, you also have a veterans court and it's, I think it's either starting or it's going or it started. There will be some other specialty courts that you'll begin to, to think about as it relates to alternative courts. Those courts don't have to be in a jury capable courtroom. So those are things that we're going to continue to talk and work through. Next slide. So here's a traditional courtroom, pretty, pretty self-explanatory of what you see and how that goes together. But. One of the things I want to share here is you think about traditional court. Is there is not a lot of flexibility, right? All of that is pretty permanent. It's there. It's going to be a jury capable courtroom. And that's what it's going to be for today, tomorrow and ten years from now. Next. What we're seeing is more of a, the idea of a formal ceremonial and order court. That you see there on the left, it still has the flexibility. So although it has jury capable, it has gallery seating, those tables are all movable. The ability to be able to do any type of court in that space can happen. So we can do criminal, we can do civil, we can do anything in that space if we so chose. Right? And that's the idea behind where court design is going today. So it's not specific to one type of caseload. It's, it's broad and allows for everything to happen. And then we want to think about problem solving court. So the other piece that's important about what we're talking about. We talked about alternative courts and those types of things is how does court actually begin to function differently in that space on the right? Than what you would have seen on the left and or the two slide, the slide previously. So again, court and what it is today is different. Excellent. There's the idea of collaboration, mediation that can occur. There's the idea of high traffic and hearings. So I don't know how many of you get over the courthouse. I try to stay away from it unless I'm doing design work. But the idea of being able, I don't know if you know about the kind of high volume component that happens in a, in a one to five minute window, right? And it's just moving like this. So the idea of a court space that actually allows for that to happen is fairly simple and can work very well. The idea behind this though is the space doesn't have to be eighteen hundred to two thousand square feet. This can be. I don't know, eleven hundred, thirteen hundred square feet. So those are things that start to help us define the space that we need within the, within the building itself. Next slide. There's also the hybrid court model. And this is an item that as we've continued, as we've talked to the users, as we've talked to the judges and the staff. Is an idea to think about as you relates back to the idea of alternative courts. Is there that ability here to have court on the left? Where you have staff and everybody here, but everybody else is virtual. So it's easy to be able to see what's going on. The cameras are there. Everything can be seen and heard. Evidence can be provided on those screens and shared with those that are virtual. On the, on the right hand side is the idea of can that be all movable furniture, right? So both those can do that. But on the right hand side, can that be an alternative courts? Because alternative courts really doesn't want to be this idea of a, of a judge sitting at a dais. That's eighteen, twenty-one inches high. They want to be down with those individuals and having a conversation. So that's the idea here is this can be rearranged and looked at in a multitude of ways. The other piece to this is the square footage. And I talk about square footage because we're going to talk about it at the end. So just, just know that it's coming. But it's the idea of this can be a multi-use type of a court space. Now, what I will share with you is as we've had this conversation with the judges, although they're receptive to have the conversation. We haven't moved it completely forward to be able to say this is what we're going to do. So I don't want you to think that this is where we're headed. These are the things that are out there that are leading edge on court today. Next slide. You can see here, so the red box is about a nineteen hundred or so square or fifteen hundred or so square foot space. So you can see in a fifteen hundred square foot space, which would be pretty close to what we might use for a small jury capable courtroom. Is you can capture now two alternative hybrid type court spaces. So as you, that again, kind of gives you a reference to think about what, what you have. So. To put that in a perspective, your courtrooms on the first floor are running between sixteen hundred and eighteen hundred square feet. So you can kind of think about that a little bit as it relates to space holistically. Next slide. So let's talk about courthouse review for a second. We'll talk about what we've been doing and where we've been going. So when I first talked at the beginning about those ideas of what makes a court happen today. So recognize that you have multiple entrances to this building. So you have the entrance there to the north. East or sorry, northwest. You also, although it's locked, have a staff entrance that occurs down there on the south side. Typically in courthouses today, you'd see one entrance for both public and staff. If you have a second entrance for staff. There's still the scanning screening capability that occurs there. That may be an operational item that may be staffing items that occur within that space, but you're still checking them as they come through. And there's a multitude of ways to think through that as we go around and, and look at different spaces. There's no real drop off space. The, the parking lot for staff. That are judges or sheriff's office or other, other individuals. Elected officials, there's no security to that parking. So you and I can both drive into that, even though there's a sign up. That says this is secure parking. We can drive in that space. So those are things that as we think about this master plan, how do we correct those or how do we make them better at the end of the day? The other piece that I want to talk about as it relates to this slide is the idea of parking. So one of the things that you guys know, and I'm not going to say anything you don't know, there's not a lot of parking. Right? Around this area. So parking, whether it's to the south here. In that parking lot or the tad bit of parking between the buildings, that's about it. And then you've got some off street type parking that occurs. So when you start to envision the growth of this community, the growth of this courthouse. And the amount of caseload that's going to begin to, to happen potentially over the next ten, fifteen and twenty years. Where do those individuals park? Most courthouses today still sit within a downtown area. And so parking is scarce and parking is something that it's not, it's not just, hey, we go build a parking garage because that's what we need to have. So it is trying to find space and those types of things, but we want to make both parking and accessibility easy. For those folks that are coming to the facility. So how do we do that? Next line. The other piece that, that I wanted to talk a little bit about here is also the idea of sustainability. So you have an existing building and one of the things that I share as it relates to sustainability is one of the most. Proactive ways to be sustainable is to reuse a building, right? It's the idea that that. Space is there, that building is there, it still functions, it still works, it's still structurally sound. Let's go try to recapture those spaces. So I think there's some real validity to having that type of conversation as we continue to move through the master plan. Next one, Jay. So the next few slides I'm going to walk you through are your existing building slides and you may know all of these spaces already. But one of the things that I think was really telltale for us as a team was where everybody is. So each color is a department. And it's its own department. So you will see in some of these floor plans. That departments are not all grouped on the same floor. So the efficiencies or inefficiencies that occur within that. The other piece that I would share with you is that you don't see in your current facility is. Three, two? There's only one real level of circulation in this building. So everybody's moving through that same circulation path, right? So that's one piece as we kind of nap or map through the space. The other piece to this is where public. Is going to come to a building like this, the court clerk, court services. Those types of spaces, they're probably more apt to be where the public comes in. So can they come in? At the, at the front end of the building, get the services they need and then leave. So they're not traveling all the way through this building at the end of the day. So that's one of the things we're going to continue to look at is. Finding those departments that need the public access. And bringing those to the forefront of whatever that entry, front entry is for this building. Next slide. So on the second floor, you can see here, all your courts are laid out. And you can see how we've captured some of the square footage and I apologize. The two on the top there, those are twenty-two hundred square feet, not fifteen to eighteen hundred. So I apologize for the wrong information there earlier. Those are about what you would want to see from a size that we talked about, about eighteen to nineteen hundred square feet is what we see a jury capable courtroom is. So you can kind of see that those. Match where we would see a courtroom today. However, what you also don't see here is the idea of court holding occurring. Or how does the in custody folks actually wait before they go to court? So those are things that we need to capture and think about as we go through the master plan. The other piece to this is you can see there are courtrooms within this area that are jury capable. But the organization and the way they're laid out may not be ideal for what we're trying to accomplish within the caseload or the case type. Next slide. So here on this level, we also, you will see here that we do have. DA space as on, on this level as well as on the lower. Level as well. So those two individuals are on different floors and communicating differently. As it relates to that and that inefficiency to being able to work together. Sheriff's Office, the dispatch and then emergency management. So one of the other pieces, and you know this because I. Wouldn't be surprised if somebody's had the conversation with you. Your dispatch area today, although it's great and does a lot of really, really good things. It's not hardened from the standpoint of what may occur downtown. The other piece is, is as I walk through that space currently. If they grow at all, there's, there's no real space in that area to grow and or move and or add individuals. So those are some things as we've walked through these spaces, we've really found that the space. Needs to be more than what you currently have. Next slide. So by the numbers, your current building is about a hundred thousand square feet, give or take. So court functions, okay? So that's court, court clerk, court administration, those types of areas. Takes up about sixty-two point seven percent. Of that building total. Okay? So those are things to think about as it relates to what we're trying to accomplish within this building currently. And then how we navigate through the next steps and the benchmarking of where we're trying to go. The other piece I want to talk about here, because this is a number that's going to change as we move forward. Is the circulation square footage. So the number there on the, on the right hand side with the red number of fourteen point sixteen percent. That's what you currently have from a circulation perspective. So that takes into account that public lobby, but it also takes into account. The stairs and then elevators as well. So that's, that's what we're capturing there as it relates to circulation. Next slide, Jay. So a typical court today that we're designing today and what, let me talk about this for a second so that you. Cause I told you some numbers earlier. Well, we're talking about twelve thousand to fifteen thousand square, square feet or per courtroom. That includes holding. For in custody, that includes judges' chambers and their staff that are needed. So those are not just, that's a courtroom space. That's all the ancillary spaces needed. So jury deliberation spaces. Restrooms, those types of things that would be accommodated for a courtroom itself. So I want you to know. That's what we're capturing there. And so we did the same analysis here in your JL EC building. And that's about seven thousand square feet. So basically what we did is we took that number that we've got. And we divided it by the nine courtrooms that you currently have and came to that, came to that number. So you can see how far off we are as it relates to what we're trying to accomplish and what needs to be incorporated into the space. So let's talk about some benchmarking. And again, benchmarking, when we talk about benchmarking, it's not just benchmarking of spaces. And or buildings that are here within this area. It's benchmarking in spaces that are national and what we see nationally on the court side. So your courtroom sets currently are thirty-five percent of the gross square foot in the building. Typically we would see about a forty-four to forty-five percent in. Adjusted gross square foot there in a building. So that's courtrooms again, that goes back to, that's your courtrooms. That's your holding areas, that's your judges' chambers. Those are those types of things that, that need to be accommodated. Yes, you can ask all the questions you want.
Thank you. Do you mind backing up a slide, Jay? I just want to make sure I was tracking correctly what you're talking about. So. The nine courtrooms that you divided that by and that's sixty-two thousand square foot is what you had identified as. The sixty-seven percent of court related departments now. Help, first question, help give me an example of what is not court related department? Like what is that other thirty some percent?
Yep. So you have sheriff's office. Okay. You've got dispatch, emergency management, you've got district attorney. Because they are not.
So you're not, that was kind of my big question was were you including the district attorney? So you were taking out the DA's office space, the sheriff's. Office base and. Emergency communications. Okay. Those are the three things. So then. That currently about seven thousand square feet. Again, you said that's both the courtroom, the judges' chambers. And staff per division. And then since there's not per division detainment, the brig is down. Are you just kind of divided that up amongst?
Yeah, we took that, yeah. We, so we took that square footage, we calculated it and, and placed it within that sixty-two, nine thirty-one. And then divided that out. So theoretically you have holding. So we're calculating that.
Sure.
What we're saying here within our reign, within a range of a new facility would be, you would still have. Those types of things. So you'd have Sally Port, you'd have some lower level court holding space. But you'd also have in here in a minute, I'm going to show you a graphic where you would have actually holding between the courtrooms. That would be a secure component. So that's the other element that we would be showing within that.
Thank you. Helps me get, understand more how you arrived at that math. And then I guess. As much as you can, because I know you're in process, as you said before, and lots of conversations are in process. I'm just wondering if so far it feels true that across departments, both court related and then those non-court related places. Is the, our space is not big enough, is not sufficient? Is that? Common theme, you know, across, I'm just curious, like, that seems very evident to me for. DA's office, court services, a lot of those functions that are office based. Courtrooms is a little bit debatable and there's very, there's a lot of variables there. So I'm just curious if that felt like a message you. Are receiving across the board and need for more space or if it's kind of specific to the courtrooms. And the, you know, immediate functions of that courtroom.
That's great question. So what we have heard from, and it's not just what we've heard from the departments, we've actually analyzed it. So we took the plans that I shared with you a minute ago, those are the existing plans. And we analyzed those from office space. What's, what's there? Who's in it? What's the square footage in it? And I would tell you, one of the things that we did is we standardized that. So some office spaces, whether you talk about the DA, you talk with the clerk. Even the sheriff's office, you may have an investigator, you may have a deputy, district attorney, individual. Their office may be a hundred square feet because that's all they've got. Typically though, you would see that at a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty square feet for a typical office space. So that you can actually have table or not table, workspace, file space. And two side chairs and that, that works pretty well in about a hundred and twenty square feet. So when you start to think about those types of things where I don't even have enough space to have a conversation with my staff. Or if I bring a client in and I have to, I can't even do that in my office because. I don't have two side chairs to be able to have that conversation. So we've, so part of what we have also done in this study. Is we've taken what we know the industry standard is from a standpoint of office. Space or conference rooms or even the bathroom count as it relates to what we're trying to accomplish. And standardize that. So everybody has the same office type space. That way, if you have an individual or three individuals that do the same function, they're in an office that's the same size. So that may be part of what you'll see within our, our program as we move forward. Is that there may be those types of things where you may look at that from a county's perspective and go, well. It was okay now at a hundred square feet, why can't we stay at a hundred square feet? So those are the things that I think as we continue to move forward, we'll have to have a dialogue on. But yes, I would tell you that. There are individuals that are working in closet spaces. And when I mean closet. Eighty square feet. And, and, and they're working out of those. I, I'm not going to debate that, whether it's right, wrong or indifferent, but that's where they're at. And so we're trying to say, well, maybe that's not the right space. And that individual may need something a tad bit bigger.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It absolutely does. And I, I appreciate that approach and think I would. So I am in the courthouse a lot and my other job has me in court most days. So I'm pretty familiar with the building and, and the. Squeeze on, on office space specifically in working space for folks. And I have, you know, I just think of that sometimes very differently than what the courtroom spaces are because those courtrooms. I mean, it depends on the day, right? It depends on, it depends on all kinds of factors. But sometimes feel like, what if some of that space was available? And I hear. Other staff and also just public talk about that, you know, like noting sort of empty courtrooms when they're unable to find like a meeting room or space to meet with. Staff because their office isn't big enough like you're just describing. So I've just been. Thinking through this conversation about kind of the difference of office space and workspace for folks. And then that, the public. Procedural space of courtrooms. So I appreciate. The, that there's conversation about flexibility in courtrooms, different types of courtrooms, ways to make that more efficient. In order to theoretically like share the space of the building for folks that are working in it, right? And make those, I like the idea that you're talking about it from a standardized perspective and that. There's equity in that. It also just makes it easier for folks to move around if offices need to switch, you know, that. So anyway, thanks for helping me. Get that a little bit more.
Nope. And I, I know sometimes when I put numbers up here that. There, there's more to, there's, there's stuff behind those numbers and so I'll answer whatever I, with all those questions we clarify. I do want to, and can I, okay. So one of the other things that I wanted to say about. The idea of how can we use courtrooms? In a, in a different fashion or for other uses. I think it's part of the reason why we have talked about the idea of the hybrid courtrooms for alternative courts. I think that's part of the reason why we have talked about the idea of the hybrid courtrooms for alternative courts. Because again, if you have an afternoon where there's not. A court going on in an alternative court setting, right? You can rearrange that space to be a training component or a large conference room, multipurpose space. Now, that's probably a different conversation that's going to be had here over the next two or three months. And I'm probably going to need some help with that from a lot of people. But tha- that is part of the reason why we have navigated through that. We also are seeing more mediations and other types of courts happening today. So, so having jury capable courtrooms like they used to have, where everybody had a jury capable courtroom. Just isn't where that drive is um, that we see moving forward. Commissioner, you sure? Okay. I didn't mean to, okay. So let's talk a little bit about our process. Um, so coming back to what you, uh, commissioner mentioned. We really are looking at efficiencies and flexibility within uh, the spaces itself. So it's trying to find that ability for standardization, trying to find shared spaces. So one of the, one of the, one of the meetings we had with the entire group. And Jay can remember this, uh, we sat there in a meeting and I said, so first question, can we share space? I got thirty seconds of quiet, um, but a great group. And we talked about what shared space means. Uh, we actually have toured um, a couple of different facilities that are ours that has some shared space. And I think it was very uh, telltale again, to be able to have that conversation about what shared space really looks like. I think the other thing is, is as we've toured those facilities, taking people outside of what they already know, because they know their building. But they don't know what's out there. And so being able to do some of those things has been very, very helpful. I wanted to touch on two things here as it relates to the graphic images. So as we talked about the idea. Of circulation, you may or may not have seen this already once or twice or multiple times, but the idea behind. Those three levels of circulation and how that occurs within what we're trying to accomplish. And there's a real, uh, I think, drive to get this accomplished. That was one of the challenges that we were given. On day one from, from your, your staff was solve it. Figure, figure it out and solve it. I will tell you that so far in our options, we've, we've been able to, to come up with what that looks like. So I, I'm confident we can do that, but that I think is really, really critical to where we're headed. Next slide. So here's a program summary. This was completed. Um, we, we sent this out probably about a month ago. So this is something that, this is where I, I talk about the large number down there at the bottom. Um, so this is the, so what you're going to see here is to the, the left of numbers, the fir-, the first numbers on the left. That's your existing square footage for each department. Okay? Um, and so that then calculates out to get us a uh, uh, net square foot and then a circulation factor. So what we try to do there is actually create a circulation factor that says, hey, by the way. We know that there's going to be circulation within an office space, right? We know there's going to be some areas that people are going to walk around within a workstation space and those types of things. We capture that within that factor. And that gets us then to our department growth square foot, uh, projected need. Uh, factor that we're, are, are square footage that we've got. And that gets us down to that two hundred and five thousand square feet. So. You guys have already done more math than I have to date and figured out that, that you need double the size. That's why what I said when I started this process or this conversation was know that that number is going to fluctuate. And the reason I say that is, so what we've tried to capture here to date in this, this program. Is we went and met, we actually, sorry, let me back up. We went and asked. And, or provided a questionnaire to each department. Said, give me your staff numbers and then give me what you need. Give me what you have. So we got that back. And then we went and we sat down with each of the department heads and a few of their staff. We went back through that list. And we captured what they have and then we captured the need. Then we used our baseline of what we know. So for instance, going to the clerk's office uh, space. There are some spaces that they currently don't have and they currently don't know they need. Um, within what court is doing today. So we captured some of those spaces back into uh, the program itself. Now, we also captured back into the program. Conference rooms, other items. And so, and I use that only as an example. So the idea now is as we start to plan it, can we share some of those spaces, which will then allow us to think about the program space a little differently? Go ahead.
I, I was just going to add too, in addition to that, sort of what folks don't know, they don't know. I think there's some numbers on this, particularly like related to emergency management that are uh, ideal best practices that we may not be able to achieve. Lot, you know, the question is, is this the short term solution or is there a longer term solution? And what is achievable in those meantime? So I, I think there's also some of that work that's going to happen as well.
Jeff, also does, do these numbers take into account that kind of twenty year projection? I don't know if you had said that or not, but.
Yeah, so this gets us to that twenty year projection. Now, what you're going to see, we also did. Um, is, is we've now broken that down, because I just did it two weeks ago. To uh, get us to a ten year window and then a twenty year window. And the reason for that is as we diagram out what we're trying to solve for you as options, right? Is what's the ten year window look like? What do we have to have? What do we need to have? What's that look like? And then what's the twenty year look like? And is the twenty year, the opportunity to be able to use space that somebody else is occupying currently today? But maybe somewhere else, ten years from now or fifteen years from now. So we're now occupying that space for departments that are in that building. Does that make sense what I'm saying there? Okay. So those are things that we're looking at and we'll be able to bring those options back to the group.
Um. Jeff, I have, do you have a question now? So are we projecting for all of the same tenants to be in that space? Or are we also looking at options that not all of these functions maybe need to occur within the J L E?
That's it. I should have just brought the diagrams, right? And Sarah says, no, Jeff, don't bring the diagrams. Uh, we are going to look at. A plethora of options and we will look at them from a perspective of um. Who, who's in, who's out? Everybody's in, nobody's in. We'll, we'll do all of that. And bring those to you and say, here's how that, here's, here's what those can be. And if we haven't, if we have an option, if we don't have an option that you want to see when, when we come and share that. We'll go diagram that option for you and bring it back. But I, I think what you'll see is an extensive amount of uh, analysis and options to look at a, a lot of different ways to get there.
I would say too, that in addition to that, you know, all of this work came out of really a, uh, what I would call the downtown master plan. So the business, the operations that we have that are currently downtown. I believe all of those operations, uh, with the exception of perhaps some sheriff and emergency communications functions belong downtown. So I, if, if, if it were. You know, I don't, IT is in that building, it needs to be downtown. Does it need to be in that building? Not necessarily, but it needs to be downtown. So I think that's part of that calculus and the county leases space downtown owns another building. So I, that's all a part of the analysis that trainers looking at.
And I, I will share with you, as we've chatted with each of the departments, there are some departments that have said, we really don't want to be in the building. Um, so it, it's actually been, I, I'll be honest with you guys, it's been a great process to date. I, I thought when I started this project, everybody had told me. That this was going to be a tough one and I'm, it's not been easy, don't get me wrong. But I, it's been a really good group to have a conversation with. And, and maybe it's part of the process that we've done and gone through, which is. Not just meeting with each of these individual groups, going back and doing work. But we also have had uh, what I would call kind of these town hall meetings with each of the groups together. And sharing together where we're trying to go and what we're trying to accomplish. So we're hearing everybody's voices together. And so those things I think have really helped uh, the conversation and helped move the kind of some pieces and parts a little differently than maybe what has been done in the past. So. Um, other than that, that was kind of where I think I landed. Jay, if you click to the next slide, I think that was it. Yeah. So let, let me talk about next steps for a minute and I'll answer. Um, and then I'll answer any other questions you, you have. So uh, we are currently in continuing to work through uh, both the program and, and then some concept options. As it relates to what we're doing, uh, we plan to have some more meetings with each of the departments. And the, and the group themselves here is the first part of June. Um, and then we'll have some more meetings uh, later in June, first part of July. And the idea is, is then be able to kind of roll out uh, a preliminary draft of our report here by the end of July. So, so that's kind of the idea. Um, and, and in that. Uh, report, we'll talk about a lot of the same things here that you saw. But in a bigger form, we'll talk about some caseload pieces that we pulled together and comparisons to other counties uh, in the state. So you'll have that information to understand what that looks like. Um, and then we'll also have some, some, some dollar items to uh, each of those options that we have, just so. They're out there and understood from that perspective as well.
Probably also important to note that this team is uh, in the process of selecting a construction manager for this project. The award of that construction manager, whoever is selected through that, we've used a request for proposals process will come to the county commission for selection. I, it may seem to some folks that that's a little um, ahead of the. Or, well, I forgot the analogy about a cart and a horse and something like that. But anyway, uh, a little premature. But it's really not, because having that construction manager onboard is super helpful for estimating for the project. And we structure the contract in a way that they get paid for their, their work on the pre-construction and the design process. And then the uh, it, when, if and when the project proceeds towards construction, that process is handled uh, slightly differently. So that will be coming back before the commission here in the next few weeks as well, I believe.
Can I come in on one more thing? So one of the other things I missed that I wanted to talk about when we were talking on the site plan. So we've done some preliminary work currently to think about. Um, if there was or needs to be an addition or something that may occur. On that site or something else. Understanding the impact it has on the community and on the historic preservation component of the community. And so there are some pieces that we would need to work through as it relates to that. Um, part of what was fascinating to me as I did the research and we have a preservation group. In our firm, so I actually had them do the research, not me. Uh, but, but uh, the park. Really cool space. I remember as a kid, but I, what I didn't know about that. Was there's a true view to that park and there's a, there's a discussion about what that really means. As it relates to um, the site and the other areas around it. And so that, that will be part of the discussion that we'll have to continue to have as we move forward. The other thing I would share with you is no matter where we do or where we go. Three stories is a probably about where we're going to be able to land as it relates to height. Um, based on this building that you own and then also based on the Watkins uh, museum across the way. So that's some things to think about as it relates to what we're trying to, to do. But those are things that I think, they don't, I mean, they're not, they're not things that are killers at the end of the day for a project. But there are things that we would have to navigate through as it relates to what, whatever that is at the end of the day. And I, I wanted to share that because I think that is something that. Um, no matter what we do, it's, it's a conversation and a topic that we have to work through.
Yeah, if you're thinking three stories above grade.
Three stories above grade, yes. You can go as far below grade as you want. I don't think anybody's going to get too concerned about that.
Possibility for that space is to have, uh, to add another story to that existing building, or if we were looking at replacing the building.
So.
Is it, so it's.
Either, either.
It's structurally capable of taking another story.
So my understanding is that that is the case. We have a structural engineer onboard and I've sent him the information to do the calculations. Um, so that we can confirm that within our report.
While you're doing those calculations for structures, uh, can you check and see if either the current building is capable to carry three pounds per square foot for solar panels? Or if the additional um, floor might be just.
I could do that, that, that would be cool. Can we do that really?
Sweet. Find a place for all the rooftop units. So, yeah.
Well, we'll track that, got you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, and we talked about having one, one secured entrance, but I'm assuming especially as we're adding kind of separate spaces that are secured corridors and such. That fire exits would be probably many and multiple for different classes.
Yeah, so, so we'll still maintain and, and create uh, the required need for life safety. Um, what typically what we would do in a, in those types of scenarios is there's no, there's no handle on the outside. Um, and we've done a really good job uh, concealing those doors um, from the public. So we're not trying to create them that, that are right there and everybody sees them. So. Those are things we would do there from a design perspective to make sure that we can capture that and nobody's going to go into those doors.
And last question just helps me understand the square footage. Um, secure corridors, which we don't really have or don't have enough of, that counts towards court space as opposed to circulation space in your square footage?
No, that's the circulation space and circulation space only.
Okay, so public corridors and secure corridors both count towards that?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Kelly, Jake, can you talk about, this isn't the first update we've had. We had a different architect do a whole downtown. Master plan. How does that work feed into this work? Um, because we've had discussions before about whether to go three foot or expand outwards. We've. We've even looked at circulation drawings and those types of things at the courthouse. How did you? I know we have a different architect now, but how, how was that um, used in this analysis?
So that, that, that information was provided to the, to trainer uh, for use and reference. Um, to be honest with you, commissioner, in that. In that study, one of the kind of critical pieces of best practices designed for a judicial facility was not solved. We still did not have three distinct paths to court uh, solved. And so we were hoping that that component could be brought into this. So it was provided to the, to this group as, as options. Um, or as something to reference. Um, but we did request a new look at this. Um, we are post-COVID now and that, that study was pre-COVID, uh, kind of right at the end there, you know? Um, and so is that answering your question? Yeah.
My second question is Jeff, the report that you bring back, is it just for the J L E or does it include? Um, the other properties we have in this downtown master?
We have been asked to uh, incorporate those other properties as well and, and you will see those uh, within the report.
So you're, my expectation is that you're, you're doing that same sort of programming analysis right now for the building that we're in, in the old courthouse now. And possibly for the building down Mass Street or not.
I don't, it doesn't really include this building here at Eleventh and Mask. It, but it does include twelve forty-two Massachusetts, which is the old Public Works Building and references to ten oh six, which we currently lease.
Okay, great, thanks.
To ten oh six New Hampshire.
So they'll come with a recommendation or come back at some point with a recommendation on what square footage is needed that is not counted in those buildings. Um, I know there's been some talk about E O C in particular needing a space that is not currently provided. Um, is that something that will also come back? Or do we have to work within the footprint of these buildings?
Um. Let me figure out how to politically say this, so.
Maybe let me try, so you don't get in trouble.
Thank you.
No, I, I don't think, I don't think I've put that, I don't think we put that restraint on trainer in this situation. So they may, they could propose that we need a whole new building somewhere else. Um, if that's part of your question. So I think that's, uh, you know, it's, and that was mentioned in the initial space needs report. That, you know, there are some functions that could be relocated outside of downtown and a whole other building. So that could be accommodated there. Back to the particular reference of who. I don't know the trainer is going to quite come across and say, you only need three thousand square feet, sorry. Um, but I do think they'll have recommendations in there as to what that standard is and what those expectations are. And then leave it up to me to sort of help navigate that process with departments.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
I have a few questions. One is kind of random, but it's uh, I've been curious about it throughout. You had a diagram, the aerial view of um, the building and its surroundings. Um, you specifically had it mentioned uh, the northwest shadow. Talk to me about why that was noteworthy. You didn't really talk about it, but I noticed it on the diagram and I just want to understand why that was, is meaningful.
Yeah, so part of the reason behind that is the entry, the public entry is not, I mean, it's very difficult to find.
It's not visible.
And then also from a secure standpoint, that shadow. And then also from a secure standpoint, that shadow uh, doesn't, can, can hinder the ability to be able to see what's going on in that space.
Okay, thanks. That's what I, I figure visibility is definitely an issue um, with that, that space. So I, I, thank you. Um, other question, what, and maybe you said this before, but I just want to make sure I'm clear about it and anybody who's listening. The three distinct circulation paths, um, what are they? What, what's the standard?
And so the standard would be a public circulation, staff circulation, and then in custody circulation.
And staff circulation is judges and their staff, um, court services, kind of like I'm, all of those, even the non-court related, like like the DA's office, sheriff.
Sheriff's office.
That's what you're including in it.
Would be have that. So it may be the
Same access to the staff circulation, not separate circulation paths.
Correct. So you'd have theoretically, you'd have one circulation path, right? That staff uses and can navigate throughout the building in that, in that path itself. It may have uh, an elevator, uh, it may have stairs, whatever that may be. It also has the ability to walk from one department to the other.
Got it. Okay. Sorry, I kind of cut you off, but that, I just wanted to make sure I understood clearly what you meant by the staff circulation. And then the third circulation path?
Uh, in custody. So anybody that's coming from the jail. Um, or it could be somebody that, that uh, is in their hearing and, and is, and at that point taken into custody. And so they would then be taken into that space and down to the lower level.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm going to make a comment about that just because I, and people think about it from different perspectives, but for whatever it's worth, my perspective about the importance of that particular circulation path for folks who are in custody or going into custody um, after being remanded by a judge. It, lots of people talk about it because it's important for security and that's true, but it's also important for dignity. And the public pathway of folks in custody visibly walking through public spaces um, is an issue of dignity to me. So that's an important element that I think doesn't always get talked about because we're so security focused and that's important, but um, that's a piece of it too.
Well, and I want to add to that for just a second because there's another item that I didn't include when I talked about that twelve to fifteen thousand number. So the other element that you currently don't have in your facility are attorney-client rooms off the courtroom spaces. That's also calculated in that twelve to fifteen. So there's, so as you can think, there's some other ancillary spaces you currently don't have that we're capturing that are best practices and, and what you need to have today.
That also included would be witness and victim spaces as well that we really don't have good spaces for. I'd also say, so just as, you know, with the judges on the master plan, on the previous look of the space needs study, when they sort of talked about comp, you know, if they needed to move to two, they really talked about that staff could share public space, public circulation at certain points. Um, so, and if that, if there had to be a compromise made um, that they were willing to do that or, or they would be supportive of that if they needed to, you know, cross a public corridor, a judge needed to, or staff needed to cross a public corridor to access a ju- you know, a courtroom or those kinds of spaces. Um, they were interested in that to have some other things on the location. So uh, I, I don't want anyone in the public thinking we were talking about, you know, inmate or in custody traffic really um, being blended.
And I think the addition of some like attorney-client spaces off of courtrooms, which I did see in one of the diagrams that you were showing us from kind of best practices. And it helps clear up in, in my mind, another issue that we can't really solve with another separate corridor is where it's, you know, civil cases where it's not a safety issue of running into someone else that's also going to be in court with you, but it's a, a stress issue of having a space where you know that, that you know who's going to be there and who isn't going to be there until you go into the formal courthouse. So I can see a real value in that too.
While at the same time trying to balance this desire that we're not creating uh, little law offices inside the courthouse for lawyers. Um, you know, that this is a space that should be used, you know, quickly for meetings and for things like that. But in this state, you know, that it, I don't think any of us are looking to necessarily create separate designated spaces for, for, you know, regular routine business that could be conducted elsewhere. We're not, we don't have enough room for that.
I think we're probably more looking at like what Johnson County Court has, has, they're almost little extensions of the hallway, but it's a little
Little, little kiosks or little cutouts. Yeah, right.
Any further questions, commissioners or comments?
I have just one last comment, which is that uh, very excited to hear that there's conversation about um, uh, public facing departments and offices physically coming to the for, to the point of entry. Because just from a simple wayfinding perspective, but then it also cuts down on the um, excessive traffic and makes court security easier. But I, from a public access point of view, that's really important to me. So I really appreciate that, that. I hope that there's large support kind of across all the stakeholders for that because it is a public building that people have to come to, to your point earlier, Jeff, for a whole host of things, not just a court case. Not just a hearing.
Uh, yes, and I, I do think that, again, the conversations that we've had to date with those users and, and even with you guys have been very, very positive in thinking about those types of things. So I, I, again, I think that we're going to get in a really good spot. It's just going to be a matter of which of the options make the most sense for your community.
Jeff, as you wrap up, um, when do you anticipate being back before the commission with that final report? Just as little timelines.
Can I, can I, can I be, can I make a joke about that whenever Sarah wants me back or tells me I got to come back?
Okay.
No, I'm joking. Uh, and I'm, I should be serious. I'm sorry. It's been a long day today. Um, if, when, when, I do mean this, when Sarah asks me to come back, I'll be back. I do think that I would like to get through uh, June. And I know you've got budgets and some other things, but we need to find a, a time to probably circle back and have another work session to talk about. At least kind of where we've gone uh, here over the last month and a half or so. And then be able to come back in August, first part of August. Um, to be able to kind of dive into the report a little bit at that point. So those would be the kind of the two places I would think would be, make some sense. We can, uh, whoever the, the contractor is uh, can be part of that conversation as well in, in June, just to be able to uh, speak a little bit about what they know and what they've seen. They may not have any numbers at that point to be able to have a conversation, but they can at least talk a little bit about what they've seen uh, within the existing facility. Did that help?
Okay, that we will adjourn until our five thirty business meeting. Thanks, Jay. Thanks, Jeff.